You're listening to Good Morning Gwinnett, a division of Noise Media Network. Hosted by Audrey Bell Kearney. Sharing stories about people and places around beautiful Gwinnett County and beyond. Monday through Thursday at 10 a.m. Southern living at its best.
Good morning, good morning, all my Gwinishes out there in Gwinnett land and all of you around the world. Listening to the sound of my voice, it's a beautiful day here in Gwinnett County. It is forty-seven degrees going up to a high of sixty, so that's gonna be beautiful. It is gonna be beautiful, y'all. Hope you're having a wonderful day. So far, it's Tuesday morning. Um, I'm, I'm okay, y'all, I'm holding up. You know, we, my family is going through some stuff right now. My mom is fighting for her life. Um, she has COVID pneumonia and she is, you know, she's fighting for her life. The doctor has said she's doing better than she was yesterday, so every little bit to us is, is a lot. Um, so just, I, I ask that you just keep us in your prayers and, um, pray for her. She's a good person, she, she helps anybody. And so, you know, it breaks my heart to know that she's going through this, but I know that God knows best. And, you know, I know through him, all things are possible. And so, I just wanna say thank you for all the prayers that have come to our family so far. And, um, I know that she's loved by a lot of people and that they're keeping her in a prayer. So, please continue to keep us in your prayer. I gotta tell y'all something though, this coronavirus, man. Yeah, I heard me talk about it pretty much all year, all year long. Um, but it's weird because when you are dealing with it, and I know that we probably all have, like, my husband and I probably had it too. And it's, it's so weird because we just stay in our, we just stay in our room. It's like we're a prisoner in our own house. Um, because we don't wanna infect anybody. So, you gotta quarantine yourself in and I haven't seen my grandbaby in two days and, you know, it's, it's, I love her and I miss her so much, I can't wait to see, I can't wait to hug her little self, but I can't do any of that until, until we're better. And so, I'm, I'm, you know, I wanna hug my mom, I wanna, you know, it's, it's, it's crazy. It's, it's, we're quarantined inside of our own house. It's like we're in, we're in prison. And, you know, when you, when you have like this time where there's nothing going on except for, you know, just time to think and reflect about things and, and trying to figure out, okay, what did I do wrong? What did I do right? What could I have done better? You know, things like that, and that could take a toll on you. So, I had to, I woke up in the middle of the night, which I've done for the last three nights. And, you know, I had to think about moving forward, like, what does my life look like? And I just said to my husband a few minutes ago, like, listen, we should get us a farm. Like, we need to just go live out on a farm where we ain't around nobody, you know, cuz, and that, and that's pretty scary. You know, it's pretty scary cuz right now, we don't know what this thing is. It has all different kinds of symptoms. You know, my brother said he, he feels fine, right? My husband said he feels fine. Like, now I can't taste anything. Before, I could taste everything, now I can't taste anything. He could taste something, my brother can't taste anything. It, it's, it's the craziest thing. I mean, outside of like a little bit of like, uh, not even congestion, I can't even, it's like a little pain, like when I take a deep breath. Like, it's a little pain that I feel, but I don't have like congestion and, and runny nose. It's, it's weird, y'all, I, I can't even tell you. And, and I've had the hardest time trying to sleep, worrying about my mom and worried about myself and worried about my daughters and, you know, my uncle and trying not to touch anything. And, you know, I got to put on gloves when I go to the kitchen and put on mat, it, it's crazy. So, I wouldn't wish this on my worst enemy. I would not, I wouldn't wish this thing on my worst enemy. This is, this is like one of the craziest things I've ever lived through and I thank God that, you know, he is pulling us through. And I know he's gonna pull my mom through and I know he's gonna pull me and my husband and my brother through and my daughters and keep us all safe. But I gotta tell you, I wouldn't wish this on anybody. So, anyway, let's get on with some, some news you can use. So, listen, today is National Hero Day. Yeah, National Hero Day. So, if you know anybody that's a hero, you know, show them some love today cuz it's National Hero Day. And it may, it may not be a hero, hero, but that may be a hero to you. That person may be a hero to you. So, if you know somebody that's a hero in your life, you know, show them some love today. I used to always say my mom was my hero. My mom was tough and she still is tough. And so, that's why we know she's gonna beat this thing and she's gonna come out on top and she's gonna have a test. My aunt said a few minutes ago, she's like, your mother's gonna have a testimony when she come out. I said, she sure is. She gonna have a powerful testimony. Um, and, and I can't wait to hear it. I can't wait to hear her testimony. So, today is National Heroes Day. So, we're gonna go ahead and do our Harvest Goals brought to you by Notre Dame Sergeant Michael Thyssen for today, Tuesday. December the twenty-ninth, we're gonna kick it off like we always do and that is with Aries. Make sure you concentrate if operating machinery or vehicles. You can accomplish the most if you travel for business purposes. Health problems may prevail if you don't take care of them immediately. Listen, me and my husband, we over here drinking protein shakes, taking all kind of medicines, antibiotics, steroids, everything. Like, we taking everything, like, whatever they're telling us to take, we're taking it. So, the rest of you Aries out there, take care of yourself. Taurus, don't use the interstate as a racetrack. Try to curb bad habits and compromise, uh, compromise if your partner gives you an ultimatum. You can make new friends and experience new things if you do a bit of traveling. You can make some new friends and experience some new things if you do a bit of traveling. Here's the thing, be careful though, be careful when you're traveling. Gemini, be sure that the person you were drawn to is not already involved. Okay, concentrate on getting ahead financially and let your personal life settle down for a while. Plans to make physical improvements may lead to psychological changes too. Listen here, Gemini, concentrate on getting your money right. That personal stuff, you can put it on the background for just for a second, let it settle down. Right now, gotta get them, get your coins right, get your coins in order. That's important right now. Cancer, find out exactly what is expected of you and you'll be surprised to find out how capable you really are. A romantic infatuation from your past may surface if you frequent places that you both used to go. Favors will be offered readily. Listen here, don't go back trying to backtrack cancer. If it didn't work the first time, chances are it's not gonna work this time. So, don't be living down memory lane going backwards. Go forward, look forward. If it didn't work the first time, chances are it's not gonna work the second time. Now, sometimes that's not true, but I'm just saying, think about that before you go backwards. That's all I'm saying. Leo, you may be somewhat emotional concerning a rather private matter. Take care of yourself or you can expect to suffer from minor illnesses. Don't shy away from potential mates that they want to introduce you to. So, somebody wanted to introduce you to somebody, Leo. It could be a potential mate, don't shy away from them. It could be the one you've been looking for. You know, if they come with recommendations, that's, that's like a plus, you ain't gotta kinda figure it out. So, think about that for a second. Virgo, dig deep to find out how costly adventure will be before you sign on the dotted line. Problems with skin, bones, or teeth may mess up, may mess up your schedule. Pamper yourself today, Virgo. Skin, bone, and teeth, yeah, that may mess up your schedule. You gonna have some skin problems, some bone problems, yeah, that's gonna mess with your schedule. But pamper yourself, go get a massage, do something good for yourself. That's, that's always good, you know what I'm saying? Take some time and just do something good for yourself. All right, okay, I'm going to a song, I'll be right back after this song to give you more of the Harvest Goals brought to you by Notre Dame Sergeant Michael Thyssen, stay tuned.
Girlfriend, you got me smiling wider each day. Stars are brighter, I feel lighter in every way. Girlfriend, there's no one like you when it comes to loving. Life is richer, lives are sweeter, now listen. Stay and let, figure out where to go. And how about family, new history? Here I go dreaming. You got me going wilder than wild. Girlfriend, there's nothing that can stop us. Oh, you got me winning my life to mine. Know there's nothing that I can't do with you, with you. Girlfriend, you make my edges seem smooth. The world is happier and less busy around us too. Girlfriend, just wanna get you and I'm out of control. Well, I'm the luckiest of the lucky, let me hold. You go so wild, we figure out where to go. And how about one lighthouse just for us? Here I go dreaming. You got me going wilder than wild. Girlfriend, there's nothing that can stop us. Oh, you got me winning my life to mine. Know there's nothing that I can't do with you. You got me going wilder than wild. Girlfriend, there's nothing that can stop us. Oh, you got me winning my life to mine. Know there's nothing that I can't do with you, with you.
Welcome back, welcome back. So, listen guys, I'm doing your Harvest Goals brought to you by Notre Dame Sergeant Michael Thyssen. We're gonna pick it up like we always do and that is with Libra. So, Libra, try not to be too harsh with loved ones. There will always be two sides to an issue, always. There's two sides to an issue and then there's the truth. You know, a lot of times, we think that it's only one side, we get one side of the story, you gotta get both sides. And it, it's really three sides to every story. And then there's the truth, two sides and the truth. But anyway, try not to be too harsh with loved ones, there will always be two sides to an issue. Get busy on projects that improve your image. Um, you will have the discipline to succeed, exercise programs will be effective. Yes, get some exercise in. Listen, I, I gotta tell you, one of the things we have just talked about is doing some exercise. We, um, you know, this whole Corona thing has given us a new, new leaf on life, I guess. With all the strangeness that's going on in our, in our, in our lives and in our family right now. And it, it kinda makes you understand that you can't take things for granted like health. You know, we, we're so abusive to ourselves, we don't even need nobody to be abusive to us, we abusive to our own self. And, um, now, you know, it's like we need to be healthy because had my mom been a little bit healthier, she probably wouldn't have gotten this bad so fast. But, you know, she, she had some, some sicknesses that, you know, not that she wanted to have them, but she had them. And, and so, um, it make you think about that, makes you think about what are you doing wrong? Like, you know, I was telling my brother earlier, my brother, um, they told me he was prediabetic earlier this year. And soon as they told him that, I told him, I said, you know, that means bread and sugar and carbs is bad for you. He was like, really? I said, yeah. When I told that joke of that, he stopped eating all that stuff and he lost like thirty pounds. He stopped eating bread, stopped eating sugar, and my brother loves sugar. Like, he is a junk fanatic, like candy and cookies and stuff like that, oh my God, he is a junk fanatic. Um, but since they told him that and I told him why, he stopped eating all that stuff, dropped thirty pounds and just barely eat any. Like, he may eat, like, he may taste something, but that's as far as it goes. Um, Scorpio, don't be too eager to dismiss someone who works under you. Don't let domestic problems interfere with your objectives. Look closely at motives and honestly, your personal encounters. Mm, mm-hmm, look closely at motives and honesty in personal encounters. What are their motives? What do they want? It's something that they want, look closely, Scorpio. Yeah, Sagittarius, promotionals will be yours if you have acted professionally in times of crisis. Your lover will cost you dearly if you let them. Opportunities to get involved in self-improvement projects will be rewarding. Yes, listen, your lover, mm, they gonna cost you dearly if you let them. Now, you don't have to let them, Sagittarius, it's up to you. It's up to you whether or not you let them cost you dearly. And if you do, that's shame on you. Capricorn, don't let your emotional upsets interfere with your professional objectives. You are better off visiting friends and relatives than entertaining at home. Romance is likely if you participate in unusual forms of entertainment. What kind of forms of entertainment are those? I don't know, Capricorn, you know, romance is gonna be likely if you do that, what is that? I don't know, could be sports, could be horseback riding, I don't know. Sounds like, sounds intriguing though. Aquarius, jealousy may be a contributing factor to your emotional ups and downs. Love can be heightened if you sit down and discuss your future plans. You can get into your self-awareness groups or look into physical enhancement programs. Yeah, get into some self-awareness groups, like, I'm all over that. You know, all year long, I've been doing things that, you know, make me better, make me better. And I, I think right now, it's gonna be even, I'm be even more focused on that self-awareness and consciousness and conscious living. Um, I'm telling y'all, this, when is you? Like, you know, I've, 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 I've had, I've been talking about the coronavirus all year because it touched my family at the beginning of the pandemic. And here we are again, at the, at the, not the end, but towards almost a year out. And it's, it has touched me in a super duper major way because it touched my mom and, and it touched me and my husband and my brother. Um, so now, you know, we were already on this journey of awareness, now I'm even more focused on conscious living and, and healthiness. My fellow fish Pisces, don't let an incident at work play on your mind. You can win if you open, if you're opening up front with your boss. You need to fulfill your needs and present your talents. All right, so listen, fish, I ain't got no boss. You gotta be opening up front with your boss. Not all you fish, you got a boss. No, you can win, but you gotta be open and upfront with your boss. All you fish who don't have a boss, you gotta be opening up front with yourself. All right, all right. So, Harvest Goals, I got for today, I'll be back again tomorrow at ten a.m. to give you more of the Harvest Goals. Brought to you by Notre Dame Sergeant Michael Thyssen, let's move on to some news you can use. So, apparently, the $2,000 stimulus package is still on the table. I thought it was, I thought it was done. I thought after the president signed off on the bill, it was done, but apparently, they're still trying to get the $2,000 over the $600. So, that's still kinda in, in flow. So, we'll see what happens with that. I know a lot of people are wishing that they do. Now, there's some Republicans who say, you know what, it's not gonna help, so why do it? I can't see why that, I can't see why that wouldn't help. Um, they're saying they don't see how it's gonna help, so they, they're not trying to do it. But, it's still on the table, I thought it was a done deal and, you know, people were set to get at least the $600, but, um, let's see what happens. You know, you never know. I think, um, I think that a lot of people could use the money. I, I don't think, I know a lot of people probably could use the money. It, it, because it's, it's still a lot of people that suffering right now because of all the stuff that's going on. And so, there are a lot of people that could definitely use the money, you know, so we'll see what happen. Um, Nicole Love Hendrickson got sworn in yesterday as the first African-American commissioner board chairwoman here in Gwinnett County. So, she is making history in Gwinnett County, y'all. We had a lot of firsts in Gwinnett County and she is the first African-American to serve in that position as a chairwoman, um, as an African-American and a chairwoman. And so, congratulations to Nicole and, and I know she's gonna do some amazing things here in Gwinnett County. Um, Commissioner Nash is, you know, she's on her way out and she, she served Gwinnett County for so many years. And, and when I, I had a chance to sit down with Nicole Lang, Commissioner Nash, I think it was last year. And they have a lot of respect for each other, so I think that this is a good transition, um, between the two women because Nicole liked her, she liked Nicole. And, and I just got nothing but good vibes between the two of them last year when we went, when we had dinner. Um, it was one of the, the, um, events where the community outreach department would do like dinner with the commissioners. And, uh, that's why I got a chance to sit down and talk to Commissioner Nash and Nicole was there as well because that was her department at the county at the time. So, um, I know they have a lot of mutual respect for each other and I think that, I know Nicole's probably gonna do some great things. And, you know, Charlotte probably has some big, some big shoes to fill because people, people loved her and she stayed in that position quite a while. And so, Nicole, now Nicole is in that position. So, congratulations to Nicole and everybody who's doing some firsts, like, there's some firsts all over the place, like, first, you know, sheriff. And, you know, so it, it's five other women, Pat C. Austin Gaston, who was the first, uh, African-American DA woman, you know. So, we got, um, we got a lot of firsts in Gwinnett County and that makes me proud, you know, as a woman, but more so as an African-American woman. So, I'm excited to see all the great things that's gonna come out of all these, uh, people who have been put into these seats and all the great things they're gonna do for the county as well. All right, listen, I'm going to a song, I'll be right back after this song to give you more of what's going on in and around Gwinnett County, stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back. It's your girl Audrey Bell Kearney giving you the daily rundown of what's going on in and around Gwinnett County. Um, there is a part-time, um, admin, administrative position person needed, um, in the environmental field here in Loganville. So, a part-time administrative position for an environmental consulting firm is, um, they're looking for somebody to fill this position. It's a full-time, um, may develop into a full-time position, must be proficient in Microsoft Office software, very organized and detailed. Duties will include project tracking, maintaining office calendars, filing paperwork, um, keeping up with personal records and professional licenses, science-based degree or experience preferred but not required. Must be comfortable multitasking and making phone calls and interacting with other employees. Flexible schedule and pay depending on experience, right? So, if you're interested in this, this position, um, you can call Ken, his number is seven seven zero two four one six one seven six. Listen, anytime I get to announce that there's a job available, I'm gonna do that cuz I feel like there's a lot of people who are still looking for employment. And if you know that this could be a possible fit for you, go ahead and give Ken a call, seven seven zero two four one six one seven six. Um, here's the thing too, I always say this, you may want to think about enhancing your skills. Like, if you have some time right now to sit out, go online, take some classes. I, I'm telling y'all what I'm about to tell y'all, y'all know I talk about this all the time and I need to really reach out to them and say, y'all need to pay me. But Udemy.com, U D E M Y, Udemy or Udemy.com, you can find a ton of classes over there to take. You got Skillshare, you can go to Skillshare and take some classes, you can go to Udacity and take some classes. You can take a bunch of classes on a bunch of different platforms that's gonna help you enhance your, your skill sets. And this is gonna make you marketable. So, you know, if there's something that you always wanted to do, go out and take the class and learn how to do that thing and then go and find a, a company that's looking for that skill. Now, what I will tell you, make sure it's something that you're passionate about. Don't just do it because you're chasing money cuz it's not gonna be fun. Like, it may be fun in the, in the, when you first start getting them checks. And I know some people are like, yeah, I'm getting checks, it don't matter, yeah, it's gonna matter. Like, later on down the line, it would definitely matter. I don't care how much money you get, you gonna feel like you're not fulfilled, you gonna feel like something is going on in your life, you gonna feel unhappy because all you did was chase money. So, anyway, you know, take a new skill set up, do something new, um, and, and that way, you, you'll have a new skill set. So, that job is available, they're looking for somebody, it could turn into a full-time position. And again, that number is seven seven zero two four one six one six seven six and the person you need to talk to is Ken. So, Ken has a position available for you. Let me tell y'all this, so you know that, um, they were saying that they, there's such a shortage of substitute teachers in Gwinnett County that right now, they're not even asking you to have the sixty college credit, uh, credit, college credits that you normally needed to have. So, if you wanna be a substitute teacher, now's the time. And I think the pay started at ninety-eight dollars to a hundred and eight dollars a day. Now, you know, for somebody, they may say that's not a lot of money, but for somebody, that's, that's good money. And all you need is a high school diploma? Yeah, you might wanna think about that. Now, you just gotta be flexible and know that you gotta go out and, um, you know, you gotta have a flexible schedule. So, when they call you to come to work as a substitute teacher, you can, you can go to work as a substitute teacher. So, think about that for a second and, um, and, and throw your, uh, contact the Gwinnett County Public School System to see what you need to do to become a sub. Cuz right now, they're looking for substitutes because they have a shortage, they have a shortage and, and they need you. So, if you have ever thought about going into the school system, this could be a great opportunity, at least for you to get your feet wet. At least for you to say, you know what, yeah, I wanna do this, or no, I don't wanna do this. You know, cuz you might go in there, think you wanna go in there and say, you know, especially if you're looking at a career education, this is a perfect opportunity for you to get your feet wet and make some money at the same time. It's almost like having a paid intern, right? If you're in college right now and your goal is to be an educator, this is a perfect opportunity for you to test the waters and see if there's something you really wanna do. So, right now, Gwinnett County is looking for substitute teachers and you don't even have to have the sixty college credits that you normally would because there's such a shortage at this point. There's a little girl, y'all, in Sugar, um, not Sugar Hill, Snellville, she has read over one thousand books before kindergarten. And so, she got a, she got, her name is Josie Balkum. Josie done read a thousand books, she's not even in kindergarten yet, she got a certificate for that, I think that is so freaking cool. You know, but you know what, it, it was her parents that probably took the time for her to, you know, to go to the library, get the books, you know, and, and then read the books. So, that, that's a lot on them too, so that's a good thing. So, congratulations to Josie and congratulations to her parents for taking the time to even push her in the direction of, you know, of reading. Cuz a lot of times, parents don't wanna be bothered, but Josie done read, I thought, think about that for a second, y'all, a thousand books? That's a lot of books, that's a lot of books. So, tomorrow, I'm gonna bring my husband on with me, y'all, we gonna do the show together tomorrow cuz we locked up in this room together. So, we, we might as well co-host our show together tomorrow. And, um, my husband, he's funny, so I don't know how we gonna, I don't know how this gonna be, but we gonna find out tomorrow. I'm gonna bring him on, he gonna co-host with me tomorrow and, um, cuz we, we've always talked about doing a show, we was gonna do a show called, so his nickname is Boo, right? And we was gonna be, we was gonna do a show one time called AJ and Boo, which is my initials, AJ. Um, we were also gonna do a show one time called Between the Sheets with AJ and Boo and we didn't do that one. So, he's gonna co-host with me tomorrow, so I'm excited about that cuz he's in this room, I don't know if y'all can hear him, but he's making a lot of noise and I'm over here like, shh, like, you know. So, yeah, cuz I don't wanna go out to my studio, I'm locked in my room. Here's the thing though, I have, I have computers everywhere, so it don't matter. Like, I got computers, I might, probably one should be in the bathroom somewhere, but we got computers all over the house. So, that's why I'm able to do the show from anywhere in the house and I didn't wanna go in the office because I don't wanna expose anybody. And so, I'm in the, and I'm in the, in the bedroom, um, doing the show and he's gonna co-host with me tomorrow. So, that's gonna be pretty interesting, I can't wait to see, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have to bring up my big guns tomorrow though, so we can do a good show together. Um, and, and see how that all rolls out. So, that's gonna be exciting for us to see, so y'all can stay tuned for that tomorrow and see how that all rolls out, okay? All right, listen, I'm gonna go to my last song, then I'm gonna come back and give you my word of inspiration for the day, stay tuned. Alright, listen, I'm gonna go to my last song. Then I'm gonna come back and give you my word of inspiration for the day. Stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back. So listen guys, I know this was a very short show, but you know, I'm doing it, I'm doing this from, um, from my makeshift studio here in my bedroom. And so I don't, I don't have everything I need in front of me. Cause I didn't, I didn't go to my studio, but I did wanna just come on and give you some news and, and the Harvest Co's, of course. But before I go, I wanna give you my word of inspiration for the day. And here goes. Call it a clan, call it a network, call it a tribe, call it a family. Whatever you call it, whoever you are, you need one. Jane Howard said that and she was right. I wanna thank you to my, my family, my friends, my tribe, my clan for praying for us right now in this really strange time in our lives. I thank you so much and I love you all so much. I wanna thank you to all my listeners who have reached out and who are praying for us right now. Um, as we get through this coronavirus pandemic, um, again, that has touched my family. Um, and I thank you too. Listen, if you missed any episode of the show, be sure to go to GoodMorningGwinnett dot com and listen to past episodes there. Also, make sure to follow me at GoodMorningGwinnett dot com on Facebook and on Instagram at Good Morning Gwinnett and on Twitter at GM Gwinnett. And go to Apple Podcasts, find your favorite two episodes and give it five stars. Yep, appreciate you for that. Don't miss an episode. Download the app from the App Store. So whether you got a, a Apple or Android, there's an app for that for Good Morning Gwinnett. So download the Good Morning Gwinnett app to your phone. And I, I forgot to tell you, I forget about this all the time. Listen, Noise Media Network is a parent company for Good Morning Gwinnett. We have an app too for that. Check that app out. That's a nice app. It has Good Morning Gwinnett on there, but it also has, um, My Gwinnett and it also has Impact Marketing in the doll world. These are shows that's on the network, both video and audio. So check that out as well. That's Noise Media Network. And if you have any of these, if you have an Apple TV or Roku or Firestick or Android TV, you can download both of those apps on your, on those devices, alright? So listen, thank you again for listening. Please continue to keep us in your prayers. I'll be back again tomorrow at ten AM, God willing. And I have my co-host with me tomorrow. So you guys will get to, get to hear him talk, talk tomorrow. So stay tuned, y'all. Stay safe out there. Keep your mask on. Hug your family, tell them you love them. And I'll be back again tomorrow, God willing. Until next time, make it a great day. Bye, y'all.
You've been listening to Good Morning Gwinnett. Make sure to tune in Monday through Thursday at ten AM Eastern Time to find out what's happening around Gwinnett. If you liked this episode, subscribe now and share with your friends. To learn more about Noise Media Network, visit noise media dot U S.